Twenty five regular city council meeting. Um, can I roll out race?
Hi.
Here.
Mallory.
Here.
Mills.
Here.
Darling.
Here.
Oliver.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
Orange.
That's.
Okay, please stand and find me the place.
I believe you didn't so. The United States of America. It was two now my my six hands. The reaction, my God, and your resolve. We have a team of justice.
One of the ones in public comments on agenda items only right now. You have a public comment on an agenda item. Please stand, state your name. And here's a three. Question as answered. Like writing to the city court, getting worst cancer. Exactly. There is no public comments there. I have a close that portion of public comments. Can do that. It's a perfectly legitimate for same style communication.
Hold the motion to a free agent. Vacation.
Yeah. Second that motion. Change of receive follow. Do you have a motion by councilman Dodd and second by councilwoman Martin to approve the agenda and receive and file all communications? Any comments on that? Okay. All in favor? Hi. Okay, we're going to move on to number six approval of prior meeting minutes. We have the regular city council meeting minutes from February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Make a good motion as presented.
Motion by councilwoman Mills, second by councilwoman Oliver to approve the regular city council meeting minutes. February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five is presented. Does anyone have any comments on that? Meeting minutes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all right, we have. So I'll post. Thank you, okay, we have seven. A and B, the police and fire department February reports. Does anyone want questions about that? Well, comments.
Getting streets more now than they have in the past.
So anything you wanted to answer that at all?
Uh, no, I think we talked about Oscar Colbert came on. He started his field training, he's doing a fantastic job. So pretty excited to go to him come on, boys.
Thank you. Perfect. All right, moving on to eight. A, we have bills and disbursements for the month of February twenty twenty five. We might tell me the. Uh, before before it comes out, um, pass promo. Yeah, I will second that motion. And children's.
Uh, I can pull them up for the official record. Coin of order.
Do you want to make a motion for this presented?
Three hundred and forty two thousand, six hundred and ninety four dollars and sixty two.
That is, I'm just there. Motion by. Cal and then Wormsby, second by councilman Park. That's approved the bills and disbursements as these. All right, you got.
I see we've got. Gone dear older.
Yeah.
They were new we haven't yet.
Almost, it's been here a while and the guys have been doing it quite good, so.
And then, uh, we've got Bill here, the underground structure. The infrastructure services. Is that where they go going around and checking the in the streets, the sewer or something like that?
Yes, uh, what they're doing is they're actually going to check lines to let the lead lines. So that's part of that grant that we got with the phone around and checking. There is water lines and ensure they're not letting it there. They document it so that we can remove those when you get turned off.
Should be unchecked number three, seven, six, five, zero. It is progress business. Berthie Bridge, travel. Is the often. Or said he told him two hundred, what is progress really? Is it a study?
That's where we we, yeah, we're giving the first payment for it. And then that then the rest is do it at completion. And I remember that's for our normal audit plus a single fund audit that we received over a certain amount of federal grants.
And now we all done anymore or?
I I don't believe we know of anything right now.
Sure. Seven, seven, one, three. Um, for twenty ninety four street one hundred six.
That is the Vodman building, um, he did have to pay the taxes on that building.
Thank you.
What do you taxes on a building you own?
Part of that goes in town, right?
Well, it takes a while before everything gets transferred over. We don't have to pay taxes on it. And so it's kind of, yeah, to pay that one and that was already. So far along that we were going to get filled for.
Something.
Yes.
Okay. Makes sense. Yeah. Any other questions?
I do.
Okay.
Check number three, seven, six, zero. For committing some legal people. And it's talking about. Please, um, city manager tax strike, you know, what is that about?
Um, we tax strike Google is where people decide they're going to appeal their taxes such as Walmart. Uh, sometimes we have to hire an attorney because they have an attorney. Um, so we have to extend what we're collecting property tax. So that's probably, um, that's what that is. There's a number of those coming up. We're probably going to get more as the test of time goes on, so.
I see that. They have bought it too. And we also had another one running by items. Which you tell us would just maybe do. Just have to be. Just a point. So we have. Both companies party.
They they know I explained this a couple of times, so I'll I'll, you know, do it one more time. Raymond does our our kind of day to day accounting, things like that. They do help Casey help prepare for the audit. And the audits have been done by Big Rich for like.
Ten years.
But I don't know how many years. But they have to be separate. One is an auditor and one's an accountant. So there there are several. And so, but our accountant can't help Casey get ready for the audit. But actual audits are done by the version they have. I I believe it's ten years or more. So.
Well, I I had someone ask me a question. They said that you've had Raymond since July first of twenty two. Um. The present, it is like two hundred and fifty thousand, which is a quarter of the million. The dollars and equalized to seven thousand, eight hundred above. Um, I know they were helping Casey. But. Do we need to have? Raymond and treasurer financial director of all three?
So when you say two hundred and fifty thousand, that's over the last several years, you're talking about?
Three years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money.
I mean, I mean, yeah, we we approve that, yeah. We use that then a lot, so.
This may aside, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things you gotta remember, at one point, we did have a treasurer finance person. Um, we had some people in here that, uh, were here for a very short period of time, never really got their feet on the ground. So at one point, I know one year we were pretty heavy on what we viewed Raymond for. Because they were our. Basically, our finance directors for that period of time. Almost years.
Period, yeah.
Um, so, yes, it was very heavy during that period. Um, we did bring that up and we had discussion of hiring them. That for the first few years, things would be a little steep and then they'd start going down. I believe, uh, this year we might be a fifty, maybe fifty thousand dollars, so I thought this year. But, um, let's let's do a little analogy. We need another person there to help. If I went out and hired somebody for twenty five dollars an hour. It's about fifty thousand dollars a year plus benefits, you're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars. Right? And that person would be new, straight off the street.
Training.
We'd have to train them, we have to go on, they wouldn't have an education because if I want somebody that really understands all this. I'm gonna have to probably pay him fifty dollars an hour plus benefits. Um, so. It's a deal because for two hundred dollars, they are two hundred dollars now. When we get some of the best accountants and financial people that we can get to help us. And I think in the long run, that pays off because we get good audits. Um, we're able to get grants in, uh, because they look at it and say, okay, they they can account for their money. Um, they do it well. And here's all the documentation for it. That helps us. And so I figured every year we should probably be paying both on legal and accounting side. Well, we probably should be in that number of about two hundred thousand dollars total per year. Um, we gotta remember, when we're doing all these projects, we don't have a small budget. There's times worth, you know, fourteen, seventeen million dollars. So. Having one person and charge seventeen million dollars and try to figure out how to pay the bills and pay unemployment and pay payroll and everything else. It's impossible. If we go to another community roughly the same size, they'll have a treasurer, a deputy treasurer, a payroll clerk, payroll clerk. Council seaman person, so they probably have four people. We really have one and then, uh, helping out is, uh, is is we have one other person helping out. So we're grossly underscapped. Really what we're doing. So we need that in order to be able to get our jobs done and done on.
Would it be would it be accurate, almost accurate to say that? Because we have all these extra projects going that they're kind of making up for having those extra projects?
Yeah, I mean, you gotta think, um, from the time I got here, before I got here to now. Probably getting three to four times and more per year of grants than we did in the past. Which is substantial, right? I mean, you see grants, hey, we got an eight hundred and seventy one thousand, hey, we got this. If you go back and look at time at the grants that came in over time and then look at it for the last three years, Casey ran that for me the one time. Were probably three to four times higher. So, like you said, the one year we had seventeen million dollar, I think this year is fourteen million dollar. Next year, probably somewhere in that range again. That's a lot of money, man. You gotta think of how many companies in this town have that kind of budget. I mean, not many. So.
But come next year. I think what's important to delineate here is that there's no company, uh. Large company that has that does everything themselves. They all have CPAs. And Raymond does not do the day to day stuff. Casey does. And so Raymond couldn't possibly, you'd have to have more Raymond people if they were to do the tiny thing. So Casey does all the day to day stuff. Can sit over to Raymond and make sure everything is right and everything's backed out. So it's a two person job and this is any different, we're in the honest collaboration.
Definitely to add to the councilwoman Mills is is stuck in this. One of the things too, you remember that long report we had to get approved for the retirement program? How many people up there say, hey, I understood from cover to cover? I did, I know I shaved my hands, I didn't. Well, we didn't prepare that, we could prepare that. We had to use Raymond to prepare that and that was a requirement by the state. Uh, just like when we have to, you know, the the audit, there's certain requirements that are required by the state that he can't do. These are people that need us day in, day out. You know, three hundred some days a year. So when we use Raymond, we're not using a person. Probably getting five, six people plus an organization of a couple hundred accounts. So it's really nice to have that available to us to make sure we're being good stewards in the public money.
All right, let's move to the next. Sure.
Um. On this one, the budget amendments. Uh, it's the first set return window professional service.
We're gonna talk about the budget amendment.
Oh.
But. Being here. Any other questions on the bills and disbursements? Okay. Roll call please.
Pardon?
Yes.
No? Yes. Mallory?
Yes.
Oliver? Yes. Orange?
Yes.
Darling?
Yes.
Doug? Yes.
Okay. We have nine, A. Consideration of recommendation of certified resolution for a special license to serve alcohol at eleven through thirteenth, twenty twenty five at four eighty Cleveland Avenue, Ice Stream.
Make a motion to recommend the issuance of a special license to serve alcohol. Third time, thank you. Five, we're eating Cleveland Avenue. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by councilwoman Dodd, second by councilwoman Mills. That's stated.
I have no questions. Um, probably got was the late application is the reapplication that's been filled out already.
You know, please tell now. I said top one. The other, I forget it. I realized I didn't fill it in. So I still put it in in recent the late for the fact there. Um, but yeah, so it would just be regular meeting. Mayor, uh, Mayor Mallory called to order City Sheboygan Incorporated, uh, to serve alcohol on April eleventh, called from fifteen at four eighty Cleveland Avenue. And then the rest I fill in, who said in who made the motion, who said the motion, giving it so I'll note that in the. All the. Votes from today.
Perfect. Okay. To my same as something.
That's we do it every year. Uh, that's the whole term I. Uh, it never reaches a limited of, uh, funds. Uh, for for the city and for the ice cream, so.
Okay. Yeah.
I'm I'm opposed to this because I personally, uh, believe that the city should be. Using their liability insurance for this kind of activity. Um, the there is a different way that could be done. And that is that they could go get a service within the town. And, uh, they use their liability insurance. And, um, your professionals, that's what they do. You know, and they got professional bartenders or whatever, and so. And I feel that that avenue is what should be taken instead of this.
Thank you. And then your comments on this. Okay. Tell us for a roll call, please.
Mallory?
Yes.
No? Yes. Martin?
Yes.
Orange?
Oh.
Oliver? Yes. Darling?
Yes.
Doug? Yes.
Okay. Uh, we have ten, A. Twenty twenty four, twenty five budget amendments.
I will make a motion to accept the twenty twenty four, twenty five budget amendments.
Yep. How's that, A? And the. Motion by councilwoman Martin, second by councilwoman Dodd to authorize the city finance director slash treasurer. Make amendments as presented to the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five city budgets.
You're on very.
Oh, yeah, I was asking about one with professional service and the city manager went from thirty. Six to five, five hundred and fifty to forty nine. Um, can you explain that?
Um, we had heard you guys approved the contract with Nemco. Uh, you redo the master plan and zoning. Uh, so that is the additional cost that's in there over and above what we normally budget for. So that's a difference of like a sixty total. At one point, sixty three thousand, some not changed. Uh, that we have to pay for the master plan and zoning unit. So that would need to change. And we didn't, we didn't budget for it. That was something we got a grant, remember, we got a grant for fifty thousand dollars. Uh, so we didn't budget for that, so that's why we had it. Once we got the grant, we didn't spend money. And we have to pay Nemco, uh, half the fee up front.
Can you explain the Brownfield part? Let's go ahead and. To me.
What what was that?
Here that said the bottom two, prior year carryover of professional services. Just kind of like having, let's go ahead and.
Why was it carried over anyways?
Well, because we didn't pay it out last year. Um, and he did not have full membership. Um, if you have enough members on that and part of a managers report, uh, Brownfield group is meeting this Thursday. Um, to discuss your things. So I forgot to, when I did the budget, I forgot to include that in there. I assumed that was paid, but we didn't get it out of my fault.
Any other questions on the budget amendments? Okay. Roll call please.
Mayor, before you go, one of the things we're doing, usually we do this in June. All of them. Uh, but what we're trying to do is we're doing it like a little over halfway over the two of the year. So when it gets to June, we won't have so many to do because we're also, we're doing that, but we're also working on finishing the new budget. So I'm crazy when we're saying, hey, we might do, wait a second, you know, just amended that. Well, no, that was to add, so we're gonna do it, we're gonna try to get to a point where we do it every quarter. So when we have something that we realize we didn't budget for, we have new revenue coming in, we're gonna adjust that right away. Instead of waiting till the end of the year. So usually every year I I go back and look at the schedules and stuff like that. Look, usually every year they were doing budget amendments. It seemed like they forced, you know, that June issue and then they, to me, it gets very confusing. Plus, in June, I'm trying to remember, okay, what did I get in extra? What did I spend out more? You know, sometimes that's hard to do. So we'll, we'll try to do it. And then also, if you notice in the last council meeting, we did something and remember it said, and allow the city manager to amend the budget. So when I can, I'm gonna include that in the motion. So that we can amend the budget right then and there instead of pile it up.
Yeah.
So we're trying to take steps to be better and more proactive. So it's easier to see what we're doing. Okay?
Okay. I'll ask for a roll call. Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Oliver? Darling?
Yes.
Doug? Yes.
Okay, we have ten, B. Now some organizational issues. We can best, it's about two bands. Just gonna read this. So this is a resolution to formally address nonpayment of city debt and center Mary Darling for some becoming of a state of Sheboygan council member. Um, so yeah, whereas on September twenty twenty fourth, an unpaid disbursement from the city contractor, even there was a charge incurred by council member. By questioning council members, no one took responsibility for said charge. Whereas on September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Council members were questioned regarding a specific charge just on the Raymond invoice. Again, no council member took ownership of the incurring said charge. And city council initiated a formal investigation, lead but for men by Mayor Mallory. Whereas on November twelfth, twenty twenty four, Mayor Mallory's investigation revealed the charges to the city. Were incurred by council member Darling as evidenced in written communication with Raymond Bridge staff. Whereas on November twelfth, twenty twenty four, a motion to require. Council member Darling to reimburse the city for actions not through by city council nor the city manager. Motion passed five days to nays. Whereas on November twelfth, twenty twenty four. A motion to place a deadline for repayment of said funds on January first, twenty twenty five, where the matter will be referred to the Michigan Attorney General Office. To institute a civil action in a court of competent jurisdiction for the recovery of funds. Pursuant to MCL one four one dot four four zero. Motion passed for is three nays. Resolved as council member Darling's reckless statements and actions have been detrimental to the interests of city of Sheboygan, city council. City staff and the community. The city of Sheboygan, city council hereby formally censors council member Mary Darling to refrain from further reckless statements. Of false or inaccurate information concerning the city of Sheboygan, city staff and any entity legally connected with the city of Sheboygan. Resolved as council member Darling has failed to reimburse the citizens of Sheboygan, she is in fault to the city of Sheboygan and subject to the provision. Of the city charter. Section three, so this is. Just, this is. All right. Well, I'm gonna just say. A a reminder to, you know, your actions have consequences. We we need to, we are always representing our, the city of Sheboygan as council members, no matter what we're doing. You know, whether we're. You know, the community, whether we're. Uh, lying, whether we're, you know, talking to our friends, whatever the case is, we're we're representing. Uh, the city of Sheboygan, so, uh, just make sure that that you are. Accurate in your statements and, uh. And. You know, upholding what is Sheboygan city council members. So I have any questions?
Yes.
Uh, actually, um.
Just a motion.
Can't be, can't be worked.
Make a motion to accept the resolution as presented.
I'll second the motion of general business B of ten B.
I have a motion by councilwoman Dodd, second by councilwoman Martin to accept. Um, okay, you have a question?
Um, yes. They're saying on September twelve. Daniel was not called and unpaid. It was, um. It was the state that was made that nobody needed purchase. I didn't make purchase. And so they're saying I'll be so the days because I didn't come forward for making a purchase. That they're gonna censor now, is this? The first censor is this the second censor? Well, you already censored me once for this, so is this two censors on the same thing?
This is just to. To, uh, to close this up, it, I mean, it it says what it is.
Yeah.
It says the result, read the result.
Well, I guess they're gonna take me to court or you're gonna take me to court. I don't remember saying, you know, like, well, it says right so in here.
I'm I'm not gonna argue with about it, it doesn't say that, okay?
Well, no, it it.
Don't say that.
It says that a matter will be referred to Michigan Attorney General.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean that. It's going to. Uh, if I read this right, Mr. Mayor, that once this is done, this is all.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we had to close the loop on that, uh, attorney general part of it, and he closes that loop. Uh, the resolve is closing the loop when it says, um. Subject provisions of city charter section three, end of story.
Right? So this is putting an end to this. If there's no more, uh, false statements, you know, if you're following the charter, if, you know, we are respectful in council. This, this will be standard anyways. But because of actions. Those are the consequences, we don't agree that that what was done was probable already.
Well, there have been other council people to have done the insider.
I'm not going there, this is, this is about, we're talking about this right now.
So are you saying I still owe it one thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars?
That's what the resolution says.
So.
And that's what the the motion on November twelfth, so. That's it, nothing is changed.
So by signing this, I plead guilty. Is that what you're saying or what what's the signature for?
There's some.
You're not saying anything. You're not saying anything.
No, um, in fact, um, part of all is that, you know, you don't even have to vote or you can vote for, um, of course, you never had to engage yourself. Um, with, you can only sustain. Or you can, you know, you don't know, so you can see the transcripts.
Well, who pushed you to this threat?
And and we're talking about this right now.
Well, I know, but you said I was gonna be censored and you told me it was pushed by Mills, so.
This is a council decision. All all council makes a decision. Okay, is there, are there any questions about about this motion?
Well, it's about freedom of speech and I've never said anything inappropriate.
This is not about freedom of speech. This is about us disagreeing with what you've done.
You can disagree all you want, you disagree.
Does anyone else have anything to say?
Um, I do have a transcript here too, that took me off the voice and there's nothing about purchasing anything.
So that's what it says.
No, I'm looking at the transcript from the voice and there was never any, any, uh.
You're the one that's sorry, wasn't purchased.
No, I'm looking at the transcript, I never said that.
Get you again.
All right, that's, we're done.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes.
I think this is a cautionary tale for future council members. You should definitely read the charter. It does tell you what you can and cannot do essentially as a council person.
I understand.
So I am sorry that you definitely circumvented that, so. And that's why I I will vote yes in this person.
I'm I'm not guilty of any of these charges.
Does anyone else have something to say?
I, I, what you were asking. You were just gonna chance to.
I, I, I would ask, there's been a chance to, um, talk with Mary on these issues, um, in U S and this opening for this.
Yes, all the times. I can argue about it. So, okay, we're gonna ask for a roll call.
Now, yes, Martin?
Yes.
Oliver? Yes. Orange?
Yes.
Charlie?
No.
Dan? Yes. Melanie?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Quite a few of the things I wanted to talk about here, we've already tried to hit on, uh, already, uh, just Thursday, six P M, the Brownfield meeting. Um, we're redoing the bylaws there. Once we do that, that will then be brought to the council for their approval. Um, we kinda took, with, the court was a very generic bylaws that they, uh, where you look, you'll find, I don't know how many cities that have the exact same wording, the exact same layout, things like that. So I think in the past, we just adopted what was out there, so we kind of customize it to make work for us. Um, Casey's, uh, the tre, will be the treasurer for that, that's why I'm asking the Brownfield board to do. I will be the recording secretary, uh, which, uh, says that in the bylaws. And, um, we're also looking for, we have two other people interested in serving on that board, we can have about the nine. Right now, we have four, um, so we'd like to get that out, at least over five, uh, so we'll be doing that. Property inspections, uh, a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago, uh, you approved the property maintenance code. Um, just so you know, on Monday, I did write three violations already, uh, so those are going out. We're working on problem properties first. Uh, for example, you see houses that are falling down, that they're boarded off, or they're not boarded up, there's a ton of, so that's what we're looking for. We're not gonna be going out and saying, oh geez, you got one small piece of paint falling off your window.
Painted.
No, we're not gonna be doing that. It's gonna be major exterior issues, um, and, uh, I'm hoping to finish the week out by having about a dozen total. Um, the contact person, uh, both Alex and I are writing on, her name will be on that so that they can call them and find out, okay, what do they have to do? Um, once they call them, we'll enter into what's called a compliance agreement with them. It'll spell out exactly what they have to fix and what timeframe. They sign it, we sign it, then we know when that date comes and they're not done, then at that point, we'll end up, you know, citing them when they actually get a statement. So we're, we're doing it very relaxed, it's just kind of a nun to say, hey, maybe you need to fix that, or hey, maybe you need to do that. Um, water in the ditches, um, we've had a lot of snowmelt, a lot of rain in, in the, in the last couple of weeks. Uh, the DPW guys, once they know that major chunks of ice are broke up and things along that line, they'll go around and start cleaning out the over, you know, the, the culverts and, and some of the ditches. So that really hasn't been done a ton. They start hitting some of the ones where they noticed that there's some big jams and water are backing up. Uh, anything on the east side, you're gonna have water in your yard, it's just, it's low lying over there. Um, and we're trying to best, do our best again. This came kind of quick of, hey, look, we went from twenties or teens to now, I guess tomorrow might even be sixty.
Yeah.
Um, so we're gonna have some problems, so we need people to be patient. If there's issues where that water is up over, then, then let us, let us know, we'll try to get there. But again, it's, it's hard to get that ice out of those culverts now. The guys will come through with a, uh, it's like a power washer, but the heat, uh, in that water, the water's heated, uh, to clean those out. But again, usually we don't start this early. This is usually an April-ish type thing, and we're already gonna have to get on it. Uh, US Venture Project, as you remember, they're gonna add another tank out there. Um, we, we got a five hundred thousand dollar grant for them for that project. Uh, we bid that out, uh, there's five different, uh, bid packages that went out. Um, we have a bid opening on Monday, um, and, uh, before the end of the week, uh, US Ventures will be awarding those bids. Um, due to the complexity of that project, there really weren't any local bidders, uh, that probably could do the work that they were looking for. I mean, this is a large tank that we probably almost put this building in. Um, but however, US Ventures has promised that they will be using local subcontractors and also buying materials locally. That is all I have.
Great, thank you. City clerk habits?
Comment I have is, I think the city is on reapproved units, I, so I can send that to city council for the twelve million period of the last.
And I'm hoping to close on that one by the end, so we can get all the.
Is this in addition to the book? Yep, so, okay, I already pre-mentioned those minutes, hoping that nothing were hitting, then, I'll return. Don't get any notes very out.
They have a question about the east side and the flooding. So if someone has a decent question, I'd love to talk about it. So in, some, there's fire hydrants in some of that lowland area, frozen more than us, do you think that would be frozen too?
Um, I don't, I don't think there would be an issue with that. There is one on the east, there is water in front of it and that, but in that area there, there's really, there's a few houses down the street. Uh, but other than that, it should be okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not a fire hydrant.
It's usually there's water streaming through that, kind of circulating, it's not a stagnant type thing.
Sure.
And then also, the pipes are down low, and then there's a neck that comes up, so there's usually three or four foot of that. So unless that frost gets down that deep, should be pretty, pretty decent.
Thanks.
Well, we have all of our water running at the end of that name, sure that.
Should be moving.
It's certainly.
Should be moving.
That's why we try to do, whenever possible, we do loops on everything. And if you ever notice down here, it, uh, for a while, there were, we turned apart when I first started, that wasn't a loop. So we would always have to leave that, everything faucet, like if you called me once on it and said, damn, why's this thing running? Well, we had to let it run because it wasn't looped, so we needed to keep that water running.
Right. We have an envelope habits right now, you have an envelope habits, please stand and state your name. And you can, uh, submit questions to the Senate Court, or even that.
Well, this is all false information and lies. They knew that they had.
Sure.
Mary Darling, a councilwoman.
No, you can't represent yourself as a councilwoman during public.
Public, public person. Boy, then, um, the guy from Raymond called, the very Texas State, the city hall. They knew it was me that called the whole time. So why, why this big cars of nobody, and they called it a charge? I made a phone call. I didn't charge anything, the city charter says that I'm able to make a simple inquiry. I called Raymond here in town to get a current budget because, um, I was told by Casey that the city staff was questioned, thought I was questioning their ethics. I don't know where that came out because the only person I talked to with Casey. Um, so I can do a simple inquiry as a councilwoman, which now they have removed from the charter and taken it completely out. And you people sat here and you just condemn me for doing something that I'm allowed to do? And this went on from July until November. They said I spent six hours to, I'm, they charged me for six, six hours, which they said was one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. The guy from Raymond downstate called me, I did not call him, he called me. He never said I'm charging you anything. We talked about relatives, um, that we both can have in common. Um, they worked with him, so we talked about that too. But yet I am being charged for six hours worth of work for one twenty minute phone call that I made to this Sheboygan office. I dropped it at that, I did not go any further than that. I had no idea when the phone rang, who was calling me. He said his name was Mike from Raymond. He said I made several phone calls, which is a lie. And, um, I have over phone call that didn't come from my number, but they said was me, but they have all of that. Not one of them have any proof that I did this. But they're sanctioning me, which is fine. I will continue to post. I check my posts to make sure they're accurate, this is about my posting on Facebook. We don't get the truth in this council, things are hidden. Um.
Your time's up.
And that's fine, at least I got to say what I had to say, and, you know, this is a bunch of BS.
Okay.
You want to do it? I agree with you, I mean, if you.
Louis Sales, Eastern Avenue, Rhythm, Tech Clear. Uh, the notion that the city is doing everything it can for, I mean, the family. Uh, well, Eastern Suburban Gardens, which is the two main, uh, drains for the east side of town, have not been addressed in over forty, fifty years, so what, Dan, does that have a whole face like? Uh, second thing is, uh, talking about, uh, hydrants that are, uh, that's a, oh, just a little, uh, obstructive. Well, on northeastern Avenue, there is a hydrant that you can't even get to, there's supposed to be a little, uh, border thing going across. But that is, uh, ice covered, well, okay, so yes, the, uh, uh, fire department person goes over, breaks the leg. Oh, okay, uh, must have enough money to pay all the insurance claims for people, but not enough money to provide service to the city's relatives. Then you have the corner of Eastern Avenue in twenty thirty, that poor guy over there, he can't even use his, uh, uh, yard because of the, uh, uh, ditches are, are swollen. Uh, he has completely flooded yard. Then you have right next to him, another private hydrant that is completely encased in water, probably about, no, he can't even get to it by, I mean, if you have a, uh, a, uh, we call it a ladder, uh, you know, one of those area ladders. Uh, then you have on the corner of Abbott and Wapa, yeah, a, uh, what do you call it, a, uh, hydrant in the middle of, uh, was considered that way, in front of this poor guy's house. Well, sorry, uh, we're gonna have a fire department person to go, try to go across there, break your leg. Well, okay, that's not annoying, no, uh, claim for the work with Tom, but that, yeah, you can't, uh, do, uh, a thousand people water line east side, uh, for real. Then you have, uh, another gentleman up from there, the water line has, I mean, the, uh, uh, drain, the drain has, uh, plugged up, so you have, uh, 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 you have a, you, a driveway that's inaccessible. Okay, fine, uh, you're paying the city taxes for property you can't get to. Thanks, Dan. Then you have, uh, uh, another, uh, uh, hydrant that is, uh, just north of there, you can't get to. Then you have across the street from the, uh, uh, county, uh, grounds, that is flooded. Sorry, Charlie? Uh, so you know what? You're a bunch of liars, a liar.
Thank you.
There are kind of questions here.
Yes.
Uh, Louis, what's your address on Eastern?
Uh, our family's address is two oh four South East.
You said you were resident in the eastern.
Yes, I'm glad. If you take a look at our tax record, you better, uh, look at the tax record. You better, you better look at the tax record.
So you live on Eastern?
We would live on Eastern.
Yeah.
This is the city where you stop poisoning our water from that old abandoned land, landfill.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now, you get your back screen.
All right.
Sir.
We're, we're done. Thank you.
Try that in the whole.
Dar Olson, I am again coming, um, just going to start asking publicly about Dan meeting with the Inmanus Township, um, board or whoever is taking over for the sewer situation. So I've been asking for months and trying to find out when a meeting is going to be set up and keep getting a runaround. So I will be coming every meeting that I can make to ask, so it's on record that I am asking for a time to have this happen. Thank you.
You have a call time? Okay, now move on to committee updates. We're gonna put you on. I have, has one small one for the T D A, uh, subcommittee, I talked about, I think I, I think I talked here about, uh, we, they have a plan every year, they get one service from me, M E P C. Um, I can't remember what, what it chose this year was, but they, they chose a secondary one, which was communication plan. Get, they'll get help with the communication plan, um, you know, to help get those volunteers out. And, uh, that's kind of what the, the whole T D A is based around, getting volunteers and to, to, you know, people helping, uh, you know, accomplish things instead of, you know, or paying people to do things, that's, that's what the T D A is based around. And so, uh, we got a heck of a deal, um, to get that communication plan as well this year, so I think that'll be a big part.
There's also the St. Patrick's Day parade.
Yeah, there you go, thank you. St. Patrick's Day parade.
Five o'clock? It's five o'clock? And they meet up at the.
It is five. It is five o'clock, Nick Leibert.
And they meet after Friday evening, right?
It's, uh, it's portrait, yep, portrait, arrow.
Thank you.
Stop.
Correct.
Honey, you have any?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know exactly how, how to, that, that, you know. Within our reach, uh, to look into, uh, having some swimming lessons for youth, women and some. All the water we got around here and stuff, there's no place right now that I know that's able to have swimming lessons, pretty not able to have, or has swimming lessons for our youth.
Are you saying, are you asking like for a, a parks and rec, like or the recreational director type thing?
Yeah, it, it might wind up, I can, might wind up being a, like a joint after, the possibly a service club, uh, is my idea. And so, um, my, my question is, is, um, first of all, do I have the right to pursue this on behalf of the city council? And second is, um, can I pursue this?
I, I think that would be something.
When I hit my point, you got.
Think that'd be something you need to discuss with Dan, because he'd be the guy that would have to.
But if you and I can have a meeting with, uh, I have a right for sincere.
You know, 'cause that, um, and I, I finally got an idea of, well, a lot of instructor that's retired from being lifeguard at the U W seven. I think there's a few other parts to it.
Yeah.
Put together with the idea of tools.
I think you just have a meeting with Dan and, and discuss that, but that, that's.
But I can do it, it's not something I'm jumping in and hurt.
You can, you can ask him, always look, yeah, that's, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, any other committee updates? Okay, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting.
We can't get up there.